Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting is four thirty on Thursday, June twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. First off, I'd like to say we have a large audience here, so please have all your cell phones turned off. And if you need to speak, please step up to the microphone. Introduce yourself and your address so that we have a record of your comments. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. Continuation of P U D for River Haven Housing LLC, eighteen hundred North Highland Avenue, and fourteen twenty five to twenty, for to sixteen twenty five Maplewood Drive. City?
Good evening, Planning Commission, John Isley, Planner with the City of New Ulm. If you wouldn't mind, since this is a continuation of the public hearing that was held on May twenty sixth, I would like to kind of, let's call it, jump over a little bit of the background information regarding location, surrounding zoning, that type of thing, if that's okay with the commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay. So, the reason for this continuation of the public hearing is that at the May twenty sixth meeting, the Planning Commission tabled this item requesting more information from the developer. The two things that they had requested for further information on was a landscape plan for the project area, as well as a grading plan. Both of those have been provided to city staff and are included in your agendas tonight. Because this was a continuation of the public hearing, notice did not need to be provided in the paper, but we did provide notice to residents within three hundred fifty feet of the, the subject area. So, one of the items that was also had concerns about from one of the residents in the area was solar shading impact on a neighboring property that has existing solar panels on the property. The developer did provide us with what is called solar shading map, and this is an online tool called Shadow Map. And you can put in the height of the proposed building and the location of the proposed building, and then it's a tool online that lets you go throughout the day and see what kind of shadow is cast from that height of a building throughout the day. So, when we went through that and looked at, looked at this information, here's at eight o'clock in the morning, can see the shadow is off to the west. Here is the shadow at noon. I should note that where this balloon is, is where the location of the property owner is that has existing solar panels. At three P M, here is where they estimate the shadow to be, and then at five P M, here's where the shadow would be. So, running through that entire day cycle, using that tool, it didn't show that there would be any shading cast from these two apartment buildings onto the property that has solar panels on top of its roof.
John, when, when was the model run? Was it run for spring, summer, winter?
It was run, it was, the day it was run was for the day that I, that we ran it, so that would have been Wednesday.
Okay.
So, summer.
It probably gets a little bit more extended in the wintertime because the sun's a little lower on the horizon.
Sure. Can take another look at them. The second thing they provided was a landscape plan. So, the landscape plan was provided by the developer for the apartment and row home site. Requirements for the number of landscaping trees and or shrubs is either based on the perimeter of the site or the first floor elevation, whichever is greater. This is according to our zoning ordinance. So, in this case, the first floor elevation of the apartments created the need for a larger number of overstory trees than the perimeter would. The required number of overstory trees for this site would be two hundred ninety tree planting units and at least four different tree species. One overstory tree is worth ten tree planting units, so they would need a total of twenty nine overstory trees for the site. The developer did provide all two hundred ninety tree planting units with seven common hackberry, seven autumn blaze maple, seven bur oak, and then ten skyline honey locusts, and those can be reviewed and attachment added to your agenda. The zoning ordinance allows for the modification of strict landscaping requirements found in section ten point two, provided landscaping will meet the intent of the, the requirements. So typically, though, staff receives a landscaping plan with the building plan review. At that time, we're better able to understand the elevations, locations in all current and future utilities, final building location. So, the Planning Commission should consider this landscape preliminary at this time. I would note staff also went onsite and looked at the existing trees, which would be in this area. And the trees that are there, there are some young quaking aspen on that site. There's a lot of staghorn sumac, especially to the west. There's box elder, American elm, Siberian elm, that's closer to Ryan Road. There are a few red cedar, eastern red cedar, and then there's also a fair amount of buckthorn on the site. So, just so the Planning Commission knows, that is what staff saw existing on the, on the property. The other item that the Planning Commission requested was a grading plan, and what we did was we used the grading plan that was provided by the developer, which Bolton and Mink did for the developer, compared that with the contour and elevation map that was used for improvements along North Highland Avenue and Maplewood Drive to make comparisons of the elevations of things such as the ground floor level of the apartments versus the ground floor level of the twin homes across the street. We did a number of different comparisons, and I'd actually like to go through those if, if the commission wouldn't mind. So, the first comparison or map that our G I S person made was a comparison of the ground level of the twin homes across Maplewood, and how would that look if you're looking up the hill towards the peak of the two apartments? So, there's five different profiles, profile one, two, three, four, and five, and I'm going to go through each one of those so, so we have a better understanding. So, the, the ground level or the first floor level of profile one here is two hundred eighty seven feet. So, looking across the road towards what could be a built apartment, the apartment would be at three hundred thirty five and a half feet, so that's a forty eight and a half foot difference. Profile number two, that floor level was at two eighty three. Again, the apartments over here to the east is at three thirty five and a half, that's an elevation difference of fifty two and a half feet. Profile number three, that's from this twin home looking southwest towards the western apartment. That ground level elevation of the first floor of that twin home is two eighty three, and then the apartment is two and a half feet higher in elevation than the eastern one at three thirty eight. So, that would be a fifty five foot difference. Profile number four is from this twin home looking across to the, the western twin home, or sorry, apartment. And the ground level there is at two eighty four versus three eighty eight to the peak of that apartment. It's a fifty four foot difference. And then number five is this home here on the corner of North Island and Maplewood Avenue. That ground level elevation is two eighty five, and again, the apartment three eighty eight is a fifty three feet higher in elevation. We also provided a cross-sectional view of each one of these elevation differences, so if you're a visual person, you can understand a little bit those elevation differences. The second one we took a look at was a ground to ground comparison, so floor level of the twin home versus the first floor level of the proposed apartments. So, like we just discussed over here, this twin home is at two eighty seven. The first floor level of the apartment to the east is two ninety and a half, so it's a three and a half foot difference. Profile number two, that twin home is at two eighty three, and the apartment again is at two ninety and a half, that's a seven and a half foot elevation difference, just ground, ground level to ground level. Number three is, profile number three is at two eighty three, and then the apartment to the west will be at two ninety three, that's a ten foot ground level elevation difference. Number four is, twin home is at two eighty four, and the apartment's at two ninety three, so that's a nine foot difference. And then at the corner for profile number five, twin home there is at two eighty five, and then the apartment first floor ground elevation would be at two ninety three, that's an eight foot elevation difference. Last one we did, that's provided in your packet, is taking a look at the elevation of the peak of the twin homes versus the elevation of the peak of the apartments that are being proposed. So, profile number one, we actually did, I should step back. We did go downstairs and pull out the old building plans for all of these twin homes to look at the elevations that were provided on the building plans. They're at twenty six feet at their, at their tallest point for the twin homes.
When you say twin homes, you mean the ones that are currently there?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Everything on the north side of Maplewood. So, profile number one, the peak of that twin, twin home will be at three thirteen. Again, the apartment would be at three thirty five and a half, that's a twenty two and a half foot difference. Number two, profile number two, twin home peak would be at three oh nine, apartment at three thirty five and a half, that's a twenty six and a half foot difference. And then profile number three, again, that's second twin home looking to the southwest at three oh nine. Apartment's at three thirty eight, so that's a twenty nine foot difference. Profile number four, that twin home peak is at about three ten, apartment's at three thirty eight, that's a twenty eight foot elevation difference. And number five, profile number five, peak there would be at three eleven on the twin home, and then the apartment would be at three thirty eight, that's a twenty seven foot difference. Does the commission have any question on, any questions on those types of comparisons or, or the grading plan?
If you could, just any profile of any of the three methods, just if you could pull up those, those slices there, yeah, those. I understand what you're doing, and, and they don't seem overly dramatic, but I think what even helps is that along that line, if you put in the twin homes that are going to be built, that will also block some of the view, it'll soften the view of the slope, and it'll also block some of the view of the building, not all of it, of course, but, but some of it, so it, it softens the impact.
Okay, so I did do that. I didn't do a profile map of that, but I have that here. Based on an average twin home peak height along the south side of Maplewood being twenty four feet. Okay? So, if that were the case, profile, let's go back to profile number one. Let's say it's a twenty four foot twin home right in here, based on the ground elevations on their grading plan, and a twenty four foot building. That apartment behind it would still, would be higher, still be higher than the home across the street, they would still see twenty eight and a half feet of it. Number two, if that twin home were to be built in between, you would see twenty seven and a half feet of it. Number three, looking southwest, if twin homes were put in, you'd see twenty nine feet of that apartment. Number four, profile number four, scroll down a little bit. You would see twenty eight feet of the building, and then number five, you would see twenty seven feet of the building.
I do have another question, not related necessarily to this, but the grading plan. The, the driveways all look like they're going to have about a six or seven percent grade, sitting up above the road a bit. I don't know what's considered acceptable, but that's a north facing slopes in the wintertime. Six or seven percent might be aggravating.
It might be. We, we did spend some time with the city engineer looking at the grading to get to the apartments from North Highland Avenue, and those are also at a steeper slope.
Yeah.
But the city engineer found that to be acceptable, so. The rest of what we have in the staff report is, was provided previously. I would note that we did receive one additional letter yesterday that is included in your packets. In that letter, the gentleman was concerned about the scale of the height of these buildings compared to the twin homes across Maplewood, Maplewood Avenue. There, there was concern about no park being platted in this particular development. Safety concerns with an active mining site. And then also concerns about the lot width and depth of the single family homes, single family lots, and then the lot depth on the twin home lots. I would note that there is undeveloped Maplewood Park as you head east along Maplewood Drive. Right now, it's, it's, it'd be tough to develop that park because of the large, large stormwater pond, but it is on our Park and Rec. Director's mine. And right now, they're going through their master plan, and Maplewood Park is one of those parks that's high on the list to figure out how to develop.
John, can you point out where that is?
Sure, I'm gonna have to go find a picture, we're zoomed out a little bit here. Right here.
Okay.
Here's the twin homes that we've been discussing right here. Apartments are proposed right there, Maplewood. That's the land set aside for Maplewood Park right here.
How close is the mining to that?
To the mining to it?
Yeah, the mining is.
It's on the outside edges of it.
Is that, so that, is that one of the reasons also that the park isn't being developed? Because of the mining that's happening there now?
Well, there is, M R had been storing also equipment on that site.
Okay.
Until we are going to develop that park entirely. And they definitely will, in the future, they're going to have to regrade their site, reshape their slopes as mining is completed in that area.
I would also note that, you know, the, the city's Park and Recreation Department has certain financial resources.
That's right.
And they simply haven't had those.
There is a laundry list of.
Yeah, there's a lot of things on that list right now.
Yeah, and a lot of that came up when we were talking about the comp plan and which parks were in which order. My other question is in regard to the townhomes that are being built on the edge of this. Because what was, one of the, you said you got the letter with the comments that it was too close to, to the mining. It's no closer than the residents are, am I correct? Because there are current residents across the street from the active mining site.
Right, right, and in that whole area, I actually grew up in that area.
Yes.
And there's been active mining going on there.
Forever.
Since I've been born. But I think the concern was more about the track, traffic being generated from dump trucks moving up and down the street and then along North Highland Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any, that was the conclusion, correct?
I have several miscellaneous questions, if I may.
I'm gonna go, go for it, yeah.
Okay. Actually, both of them have to do with grading and landscaping. Just generally speaking, you checked the, I think you said, road construction plans for, for elevations? Just to see what current elevations are? Were you able to, could you tell us how much of the, the site up along the top, the ridge line, how much of that's being taken down? I mean, you stand out there and look now, it's hard to know just exactly what will be there when they're done.
You know, the developer and one of the team members are here, and he might be able to answer that question better than I can.
Okay, maybe I'll wait off then, and, and my final question has to do with landscaping. The, the, sort of the intent of a plan unit development is, there are a number of things, but one of them is that the, that there will be benefits that are reaped by the community, that's not just those living on the site, but in general. And there's a long gray list of things that, you know, kind of check the boxes on this, this, or this, not all of them, but some of them. And one of those is landscaping above and beyond what is minimally required. I'm just wondering if there is, if what we are looking at here is above and beyond or simply meets the code?
Right, so the, right, currently it just meets the code.
Meets the code.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if, I know that you don't plant a forty foot tree, but someday if you can maximize your planting, it will soften impact even more. And we did have a lot of concern at our last meeting about potential landscaping. I'm wondering if any thought was given to augmenting, and I know. I'm wondering if any thought was given to augmenting, and I know this is a small site, so maybe that means off-site, maybe there are some kind of plantings allowed on abutting properties across the street. I'm just wondering if there's some way to soften the blow, and landscaping can do that to an extent.
Right, or even potentially installing larger trees from the very beginning.
Correct, right.
Right.
And the other question have to do with landscaping, they keep coming, this wasn't on my list, but I noticed that that entire east-west, I guess it's east-west, row of trees on the backside of the parking lot there for the apartments.
Yeah, it's gonna be right now.
And I believe, maybe pull it, we can... I believe that entire line, since it has to be outside the parking lot, is probably on the private twin home lots, sort of downhill, I don't know if they're all on-site.
They should be all on-site.
On that lot, okay, just wondering. I think that's all I have, then, I think there might be something we can do with landscaping, and I'd like to know how much earth is coming down, so when you stand out there and look, you kind of have an idea of what it will be sitting on top of the apartment building.
The hoppers here, why don't you... I think it's important to remember when it comes to landscaping that we're just dealing with preliminary, on a preliminary approach at this point in time, since there's so much that we don't know about building construction.
I agree, but there's also never really a better time than to talk about some of these things than now, because if you wait until final, there are some point when you've lost the leverage to maximize the benefit to the public, so I think it's at least, it behooves us to at least look at how we can sweeten the pot for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay. The developer wish to address this issue? State your name, company, and address, please. Thank you.
I'm Don Yonkey with Next Development Solutions, I live in Laverne, Minnesota. Addressing your questions on landscaping, I guess we have to look at everything saying, you have a code, we have to meet the code. Will there be more plantings? You know, and we've got the question, how many trees are you taking out? Well, if we cut the grade to what you want here, that means as that hill comes down, some of the existing stuff is there, is gonna be cut out.
Yep.
You know, the backside of that is cut, I think it's 6, 8 feet, so that's gonna change that, but that's the same thing everybody's asking, is don't put the buildings too high, so it's a catch-22, you know? And I think everything, we're, I mean, we put codes there, you could say, well, if we planted 500 trees, would it be better? I don't know, you know, but then that also allows everybody across the road to plant trees on their side of the street, too. If they don't want to look at it, it would block it a whole lot more if they planted a tree in their front yard than planting a tree 300 feet away from their house. So, you can look at that a lot of different ways, you know? We're obviously gonna plant things around the buildings, we want them to look nice, you know? We did put together a video of what it looks like driving down Maple Street, going through with those trees that are on that plan planted, if you'd like to see that, just to know what the impact is as you're driving down it.
Yeah, I think that would be nice to see.
I think you would like to see it, please.
And while they're setting up, I just want to point out that, yes, you do meet code, but you're asking for something beyond what is minimal, you're asking for a plan unit development. If you're simply going with a straight-out, standard development, you wouldn't be looking at the mix of properties you're proposing to develop anyway, so you can't just say we have to meet code, because no code says you have to do something beyond minimal because we're giving you something beyond minimal. But, so, I just needed to say that.
So I think when we look at minimalistic, when you look, those trees are actually all exactly placed where they are on that, on that plan, so, you know, you can also turn it into a woods where you can't even see out of your house, too, so they are, in our best way, thoughtfully placed to make the houses look like they've been there all around the neighborhood.
I thought it was, I thought it was particularly good to show that the relative heights, and that it isn't quite as dramatic as we may have feared that it was going to be.
That matches the grading plan, it's not just a cartoon, that actually has all of the elevation in it, all of the house heights that were talked about, so that matches up exactly with the plans that he showed you in, on paper.
Thank you for doing that, that was, I think, very enlightening, thank you. Does the audience have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
James Goliski, 1612 Maplewood Drive. I like your video. My question is, you showed the townhouses across the street from me, are they gonna be double-car garages, or are they gonna be single-car garages, twin homes?
I, that...
I mean, because that's what the video shows.
Yeah, and like I say, when they are lots that can be purchased, if somebody says, I want a twin home with a single-car garage, that's no different than anybody has a right to build a house that's one-story or two-story, two-car, three-car.
So the lots are gonna be for sale by who? The city is gonna sell the lots?
No, that would be...
The builders, you're gonna sell the lots? Okay. I mean, also, John, if you can go back to the grading, or the view of the height of the building.
Jim, would you stay closer to the microphone when you're speaking?
I mean, you recite a lot of numbers, and that doesn't mean anything to me, I mean, if I'm in an airplane, I can see what this looks like, but what would have been helpful if we would have seen what it looks like from my driveway, looking over ground view at that building? Because this doesn't really show me much.
Sure does. This shows your elevation from your front step over to the peak of the building over here.
Okay. And you just went down Maple Street in that video, six feet off the ground, just so you know.
Yeah, Jim... Oh, the video was very impressive, I have to say that.
Our intent was to try to show with these maps what it would be, what you'd be looking at out your front door. That was the intent of going through these different contours and profiles, so.
I guess, still one of my...
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
One of my questions is, with the apartment building, there's really no green space. I mean, if there's gonna be kids living here, if this park is gonna be actually done down the street, they have to walk past the gravel pit, past the drainage pond, I believe that's where the park is proposed, correct? Is there a chance that the city would compromise and put up your apartment buildings if you have to, but where the row homes are, and even the single-family homes, can we leave the woods there? I mean, we have, we have birds, we have deer, turkeys, we have wildlife there, and the neighborhood will miss that. And right now, that's kind of a buffer between Maplewood and the gravel pit, which is not a good site to begin with. So, I mean, I don't know if that's something that they can consider and eliminate the single-family homes, or maybe the row homes, and leave our woods there, and maybe they can develop a park there instead of the proposed area that they have.
I'm just, just for questions, the complaint has been you don't want to see the apartments. There are no trees to here. This is grass, which means you've got six inches blocking you. The only brush that's here is a pole.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, so we have a record of this?
So, the only brush is in the dark, right here. So that's not trees, and we're planting back more trees than what are growing there currently.
Okay.
You know, and if you're worried about kids walking past that, is there an ordinance in this whole neighborhood that says you can't have kids? Because they would have to walk past the same gravel pit as anybody there.
I'm just stating the fact that, yes, you're gonna have 100, or 96 units of people in these apartment buildings, and if you look at the complex, where do the kids play? On the parking lot?
These are all one- and two-bedroom, which means if you have a, if this building was all three...
Please step up to the microphone.
No, if those were all three-bedroom apartments, you'd have a lot more kids, but in one- and two-bedroom, you're only gonna have as many as you do anywhere, and there's still this much green space there as a lot of the houses do there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I spoke my piece.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There is the microphone now underneath the video monitor, so people can stand over there and see.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
There is, okay, I'm sorry. Is that, has that been there all the time?
I don't think so.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? I'm trying to get... You wanna go through attachment, or not? Or do you, do you want...
You want me to go through each attachment? I certainly can, that's no problem.
No, I just got into, no.
The only attachments that have changed since the May 26 meeting were the ones that we went through, which was the grading plan, the landscaping plan, and then the profiles that we discussed.
Do you want to review recommendations and conditions?
The recommendation was, staff would recommend approval of the application for a general development plan associated with the plan unit development. The reasons for this recommendation can be found in the attached findings of fact form. The recommended conditions, if the commission were to recommend approval, would be that, one, the applicant slash owner will pay the cost to record the necessary documents with the Brown County Recorders Office, and two, that the establishment of the PUD project will require the approval of the following documents: A, rezoning of the property by ordinance, B, development agreement, and then C, the final plat. Would note, the final plat has been already reviewed by the city council. Then there were two potential motions, one to recommend approval of the plan unit development, and then one to recommend denial. That concludes the staff report. The findings of facts that are in your packets have not changed since the May 26 meeting.
I'm not seeing it. Am I the only one that's not seeing it?
Should be in there, just to make sure I find it here.
Anybody else see it?
The findings of fact?
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't find it either.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have it, John.
Hold on a second here. We went through it last month.
Yeah, they haven't changed.
And if we went through it last month and it hasn't changed, we, it was approved, was it not?
It was tabled.
It was tabled.
I can certainly get those pulled up if you would like. Here they are on the screen. Are you wanting, would you like to go through each one and answer them?
I'm gonna ask the commission, do you want to review the finding of facts, or do you want to accept it as presented last meeting in May?
I'll accept the best, man.
Yeah, I have no problem, we've heard them all.
Okay. And they were...
Hold them up for nothing, John.
We agreed with everything, correct? And we were in agreement with the finding of facts? So, we are in agreement with the finding of facts, and if there are no further questions, I'm going to entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval for the application of Dean Madigan on behalf of the... on behalf of River Haven Housing LLC in the city of New Ulm for general development plan that is associated with PUD zoning district intended to accommodate one hundred and eighteen-unit mixed-use residential housing project on property generally located in part of the southeast quarter, of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-four Township one-ten North, Range thirty-one West, and Outlet B, Maplewood Drive, first addition. The street address is eighteen hundred North Highland Avenue and fourteen-twenty-five to sixteen-twenty-five Maplewood Drive.
With conditions?
With condition.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
May I, may I offer friendly amendment? You can tell me if you like it or not. I would like that some effort be put into at least looking if there's some way to augment that landscaping plan. I'm not saying it has to be done, I know you've done your homework, you've tried your best, it looks good. But you are asking for something in a PUD that you not normally get in a standard development. So, I'm asking you to at least work with staff to look to see if there's some way to augment that landscaping. And it doesn't have to be onsite, it could be offsite. If that's acceptable.
Joe, you made the motion, are you accepting the amendment?
I don't think that's anything we can hold them to, so I don't understand why we would add that.
Pardon me?
I don't, there's no way to hold them accountable for that, so I don't see a reason on adding that as a condition.
Okay, so you're not accepting it?
I mean, how do we hold them accountable for making a better effort?
It's simply a matter of having a discussion. The condition was simply talk about it.
Okay, sure.
I would also note that there still needs to be a project development agreement, and something like this could be incorporated into a development agreement if the city council concurs with your recommendation.
We don't ever see that again, no.
No, you don't. I have a motion and a second with an amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, when does this appear before the council?
July first.
July first.
Next Tuesday at four-thirty.
Public hearing is closed for the River Haven PUD, and I am opening, the second item on the agenda is the PUD for New Brick Project Spark Gartendorf Tiny Homes.
The purpose of this particular item is to consider a general development plan. So, you'll see the initials GDP associated with a proposed planned unit development, which you'll see PUD at the zoning district to accommodate a tiny home development project. Just real quickly, you know, that, for the people in the audience, this is, there are four elements to a planned unit development. The general development plan is one thing, final plat, or final plat is another, ordinance is another, and development agreement is a fourth. So, the applicant in this particular case is Stephen Brown. The property owner is Project Spark. They also are known as New Brick. And so, you'll see that name within the staff report. Current legal description is lots one through eight, Block one, Idiger Edition. Street address is four-eighteen and four-twenty-four Thirteenth South Street, and thirteen-oh-five Thirteen-Fifteen South Minnesota Street. Property location is south of Thirteenth South Street, east of River Bend Education District, and South Minnesota Street, and west of South German Street. The deadline for a decision on this matter is August fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The land use designation, according to our comprehensive plan, is currently low-density residential. There is a request on this agenda to have that modified to high-density residential. Surrounding land uses, to the north is low-density residential, to the east is medium-density, to the west is public, semi-public, and to the south is low-density residential, commercial. Zoning designation of the property, it currently is R-three, which is medium-density residence district. The proposed is a planned unit development. The purpose of the R-three medium-density residence district is to provide medium-density housing, including one- and two-unit dwellings along with directly related complementary uses. Surrounding zoning, to the north is RT-two, which is single- and two-family residence district. To the east is R-three, again, medium-density residence district. To the south is R-three, and to the west is B-two, which is general business district. The site is currently vacant. Area land uses, to the north, we have single-family homes. To the east, we have townhomes, a group home, and duplexes. To the south, we have twin homes, a single-family home, and bus garages. And to the west, we have the River Bend Education District. Notice was mailed to all property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject property on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and published in the journal on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We have received two different public comments. The first was a neighborhood resident who voiced concerns about the development not fitting the neighborhood and had a concern about snow removal. The second was a letter, which you have received. As with the previous agenda item, you, as the commission, have the option of having the letter or a portion of the letter read into the meeting minutes.
It was added to the minutes before the meeting?
Yes, it was.
Does anyone want it reread, or did you have an opportunity to read it?
I read it.
I've read it.
We're fine.
Okay. Very briefly, I'd like to go through the letter, maybe identify the five major points that were made, and then offer some comments on them. The first item that was identified as being a concern with a particular project is that its incompatibility with existing neighborhood character. The letter indicates that the current neighborhood is composed of low-density, single-family homes. And the last sentence indicates that development of this nature would fundamentally alter the identity of this residential area. I think it would be, in my opinion, more accurate to refer to this area as kind of a mixed-use residential area, since we have a variety of different residential uses in this particular block. I will acknowledge that to the north, and we have a strip of property to the east that is primarily single-family. The second item that was identified is that the project would have a negative impact on adjacent property values. This is something that we have seen in many of, a lot of the correspondence that we've received regarding various projects. No information, though, was provided as to the extent of that, of that impact. And so, it's hard to evaluate. The third item was the precedent of reasonable development expectations. And that is that the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances provide predictability and stability for property owners. I would note that, you know, both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance are subject to change. And members of this group may remember that we had a major change in our zoning ordinance in two thousand twenty-two. And we adopted a new comprehensive plan in two thousand twenty-four, along with four area plans. So, those documents, while they provide predictability, they are also subject to change. The fourth item that was identified is a lack of precedent and uncertain impact. The writer notes that there's currently no other tiny home villages in the city of New Ulm. And this type of development is entirely without precedent in this community. That is accurate. However, there are similar types of projects in other parts of, not so much in Minnesota, but in other parts of the country. You know, cottage communities, tiny home projects. So, it's not something that's entirely new to, to the country. And then finally, there was a request for compatible development standards. And the writer requested that if any future development is to proceed on these lots, it is reasonable to expect that new construction should mirror the size, scale, and density of existing adjacent homes to maintain continuity, neighborhood cohesion, and property value stability. From the city's standpoint, when it comes to development, we're, you know, we have two sets of regulations that apply to development. One is our zoning ordinance and the development standards that we have in the zoning ordinance. And the second is our building code. And as long as you comply with those two sets of standards, you can develop whatever size, shape, or form of structure that you wish. One other thing that I would note, and that is that at the, at the present time, so far this year, we've had three single-family building permits. Last year, we had eighteen, year before, we had ten, this year, three. And the average is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, excuse me. And I kind of dismiss that because, you know, with that, that's a limited number of units, and that number can be skewed very easily. But the three is, that's, that's low. And I don't know if we have, do we have any pending that you're aware of? Okay. So, I think what, what that indicates to us is that, you know, when it comes to housing, we may have to take a different look at it. And we may have to consider other options. So, it's, it could be an indication of perhaps trends to come. Okay. As far as the status of utilities, the city engineer has provided a review. When it comes to water, he indicates that the site has access to city water off South Minnesota Street. The main is adequately sized to serve the proposed development. The second is sanitary sewer. The site has access to sanitary sewer off Minnesota Street. The main is adequately sized to serve the proposed development. Due to site topography, the proposed development would likely require the installation of grinder pumps to lift the sewage to the main located in South Minnesota Street. We have those in other locations, you know, in the community. Third is storm sewer. The site is not bound or adjacent to city storm sewer mains. The developer will be required to control their runoff volume as to not constitute a nuisance to adjacent properties, nor to cause erosion of the adjacent gravel alley. Depending on how the developer moves forward, it may be required to have an association formed or a shared utility service maintenance agreement for the site if utility services are to be shared. PUC regulations would require separate services if the proposed development would be sold off as individual units. As far as, excuse me, access and traffic is concerned, city engineer indicated the following. The proposed development should not have an adverse impact on Thirteenth South Street, Fourteenth South Street, South Minnesota Street, and South German Street as the proposed development would generate a minimal amount of trips in comparison to the existing low-volume of traffic seen on Thirteenth South Street. The project is adjacent to a gravel alley section that should not be impacted by the additional traffic. And would have the option of constructing a bituminous alley section adjacent to their project, subject to the approval of plans from the engineering department. They also have the option of petitioning for alley improvements at a future date, if so desired. There are no comments on the right-of-way. As far as park area, the comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. Project description. For purposes of evaluating this project, the staff has used the standard assigned to the R-three medium-density residence district. The subject property has a total area of zero-point-seven-five acres. That's thirty-three thousand square feet. The property has been vacant and was previously mined. The property was formerly lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, Block fifty-two south of Center Street, and is now platted as lots one through eight, Block one, Idiger Edition. The purpose of replating the property in two thousand eighteen was to accommodate twin homes. The proposed project would involve the construction of fifteen tiny homes, one common building, a parking lot along the alley, with stormwater being treated through the use of permeable parking lot along the alley. Each tiny home would be constructed at a twenty-foot width, twenty-foot depth, or four, or four hundred square feet, and would have a twenty-foot tall height at its peak. The project is proposed to be constructed in two phases. Phase one would include construction of two model homes on lots one and two, Block one, Idiger Edition, fronting Thirteenth South Street. If you look at a plat of the property, you'll note that there are two lots that front on Thirteenth South Street. Phase one would allow the developer to provide the viability of the development to the community and would also help secure funding for phase two. Phase one is proposed to be finished by the winter of two thousand twenty-five. Phase two, subject to acceptance, could start as early as the spring of two thousand twenty-six. The developer is intending to continue to own the property and homes. The homes generate revenue for the, for New Brick. New Brick has been involved in private economic development in the city of New Ulm since the nineteen-fifties. More recently, they're involved in workforce development, business incubation, financial system. sustainability, and partnership building with local schools, universities, industry leaders to build a network of innovation, entrepreneurship, and business innovation. They believe that housing availability and choice is the key factor in business sustainability and expansion in the community. The next item involves some history on the property.
Zoning history?
Yeah, I'm looking for the zoning history. I've got it. Okay, the zoning history of the property, going as far back as we have records, in September of 1963, it was commercial. In August of 64, it was changed to industrial. There was a zoning study taking place of the community at that time. That zoning study was completed in October of 1968, when it was zoned to R3, which was multiple-family residence district. That was the highest residential district that we had. And within that district, we allowed virtually everything. And that is one reason why you see the different types of residential uses on this block is because it was zoned R3 and all of the uses that are currently there were permitted uses. In March of 2022, we changed it to R3. And you'll know it, we changed the title to Medium Density Residence District, which means that we also changed the uses that are permitted in that zoning district. The development history of the block. Four townhomes were constructed in 1979. Two duplexes on the other end of the block were constructed in 1983. The group home between the two, I'm referring to it as a group home, was in 1987. A single-family residence was constructed in the one corner, be the southwest corner in 2012. And then we had one twin home constructed in 2018 and the other in 2019. From an environmental review standpoint, the staff has reviewed the requirements from the state environmental quality board and their thresholds for requiring a mandatory EAW, which is Environmental Assessment Worksheet. That is not required. The proposed 15 units on the property is under the city's high-density residential land use maximum density amount of 21 residential units per acre. The proposed project is 19.8 residential units per acre. Since the project does not meet the mandatory EAW criteria set forth in state statute, EAW is not required. The approval process. Chapter 7.9 of Appendix A of the City Code allows the establishment of a planned unit development. The definition of a planned unit development is as follows. A type of development which may incorporate a variety of land uses planned and developed as a unit. The PUD is distinguished from the traditional subdivision process of development in that zoning standard, such as density setbacks, height limits, and minimum lot sizes, may be altered by negotiation and agreement between the developer and the municipality. The intent of a planned unit development is to allow the deviation from the definitive and precise requirements of established zoning districts. This is permitted if the particular areas to be developed can offer greater value to the community and can preserve the community's health, safety, and welfare than if those same areas were to be developed as a single-purpose district. As discussed before, to establish a planned unit development, the following documents need to be approved. That's the rezoning by ordinance, development agreement, and then the comprehensive, or the general development plan. The approval standards are that the approved general development plan will establish the permitted uses within the development that are desirable in achieving the objectives of the planned unit development. However, there must be clear evidence that, one, such uses are desirable and appropriate with respect to the primary purpose of the development, and, two, such uses are not of such a nature or so located as to exercise a detrimental influence on the development or use of the surrounding neighborhood. A general development plan is intended to illustrate the intent and general nature of the proposed planned unit development and to establish the requirements and standards that will apply to the project. Now listed below that are the documents to be approved to secure planned unit development and what their status is. So the comprehensive plan amendment and the general development plan are currently under consideration. The ordinance approving the planned unit development designation and the development agreement are pending and subject to approval of other items. In the staff report, we then do an analysis of the proposed project using current zoning ordinance standards that we have. And so we did, we used two different development standards. The first is the R3, the Medium Density Residence District. And what I would like to do, rather than going down the entire list and reading all the way across, is I'll just tell you the ones that the proposed project would fail. And so it would fail with the 30-foot sides, or street-side yard setback that would be on 13th South Street, only provides 11 feet. It fails on the setback for the 35-foot rear yard setback from the alley, only five feet is provided. It fails to provide the two parking stalls per residence. So a total of 30 would be required for this project, only 15 are provided. It fails to provide the minimum lot area. The minimum lot area in this particular zoning district is 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit. This, the proposed project provides 2,200. It fails to provide the minimum lot width, which is 75 feet, and only provides 50, and that's per lot. It fails to provide the minimum lot depth, which is 125 feet, and only provides 41.25 feet. Again, that's per lot. And it's supposed to provide a minimum floor area of 720 square feet. It provides 400, so it fails there. We have a minimum building width and depth of 24 feet by 24 feet, and only provides 20 by 20, so it fails that. So it meets nine of the standards that we have in our zoning ordinance, and it fails eight. So then we also looked at it from the standpoint of a multifamily, three-to-eight-unit-per-acre project. And again, this is in our R3 zoning district. And in this particular case, it failed the parking stalls again, because only 15 are provided, two per unit are required. It failed the minimum lot area per dwelling unit. It failed the minimum lot width, failed the minimum lot depth. It failed the minimum floor area. It failed the minimum building width and depth. So a lot of these are the same things that were failed in the first zoning standard section. So in this particular case, it met 11 of the standards and it failed six. As far as attachments are concerned, and I think John will show these on the video monitor, we have the PUD application. The general development plan. We have the site location map.
Hold on a second here, I'm still in the, this is still part of the application.
This, okay.
Here's the general development plan.
So why don't you go back and show what the, these are what, I guess.
The renditions.
Renderings of the proposed units. So attachment three, and this is a picture of the retaining wall that would be on the South Minnesota Street side of the site. Attachment three is the site location. Attachment four is the zoning district map. Attachment five is the site map. Attachment six is the comprehensive planned land use map. Attachment seven are ground level photographs. And how many of those, about three or four of them? Then attachment five is staff response to the findings of fact form. Staff would recommend approval of the application for the PUD. The reasons for this recommendation can be found in the attached findings of fact form. Recommended conditions, if approved, is that the applicant owner will pay the cost to record necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And then number two, that the applicant will complete the other steps that are required to achieve the PUD designation. There are two motions provided, one to recommend approval and one to deny approval of the request. That would complete the staff.
I just want to note two more things. When we received the letter in opposition this morning, or it was sent last night, or received this morning, that is also attached in your agenda packets as well. And then this afternoon, we were provided with photos of other areas in New Ulm with similar-sized homes. The developer, proposed developer, went around and took photos and asked that I would show those on the screen as well. So if you wouldn't mind. So these are a few examples of similar-sized homes that exist in our, for the most part, in the grid section of New Ulm. So this is at 427 North Broadway, that's a 20 by 27-foot building. Number two is another brick building that's at 613 North State, that's 22 by 20. We have one at 1104, I believe that's North Minnesota, and that's 22 by 22. There's another one at 12th North in Minnesota, it's a corner lot. And that is 18 by 25. There's one, number five is at 1205 North Minnesota, that's 20 by 22. 1209 North German, that's 20 by 22. 1102 North German, that's 20 by 22. 810 North German, that's 18 by 10. And then we have one at 1002 North German, that's 20 by 25. And then all three of these in a row are on North German Street that are of similar size.
Can I just clarify size of the proposed tiny houses? In the text, it says 20 by 20, and in the site plan, it says 25 by 20.
Sure, great, great question. So the 20, they are 20 by 25, sorry, they are 20 by 20.
Okay.
20-foot peak. The five-foot area around the building, or the additional area around the building, is additional concrete for a landing space outside.
Many times, tiny homes are viewed as being on wheels. These would be on a permanent slab.
Who's responsible? Now, is it my understanding that none of these are for sale?
Correct.
So this is owned by the city again?
No.
By New Brick?
This is privately owned.
Okay.
And as far as responsibility for maintenance of the site, you know, yard work, snow removal, that type of thing, that would all be the responsibility of the developer.
Okay, so all of the green space that we see nicely landscaped and all the flowers, that's all art, or is that part of the development?
You're talking about in the renditions?
Yes.
Well, I think that's probably art in the renditions. But let's go back to, shoot, now if I can find it here.
I mean, that looks just like a beautiful little village, but is it going to really be a beautiful little village, is I guess my question?
Pull this up. I'm just gonna go to the site plan or the site map that's overlaid on the aerial photo. I think that probably gives us the best.
I think you won't buy it.
This one.
Okay.
So each black square are proposed 20 by 20 homes. There are proposed concrete walkways. Other than that, there is going, that is the rest. And this too would also, kickstart the landscape environment. Couple of the things I would just note that there's, they've mentioned earlier, that there's rough, about an eight-foot drop from here at sidewalk down to. So they're proposing, they've told us that they're working with a cell plane block tile to get engineered, engineered concrete wall that'll be tied in.
There you go, Dave.
Before the media. But, yeah, that engineered wall that they're proposing would be right here where this line is in black.
John, could I follow up on that, that particular item? Since parking will be one per unit, people will have to park on the street if they have more than one in that tiny house and it's workforce, and there's two people, they're each gonna have a car, probably. But you're likely going to have to get up to Minnesota, or 13th to park. Is there a good way to get from your tiny house to 13th? Or do you have to walk all the way around?
In their plan at this time, you would have to walk all the way around. Now sidewalk could potentially be provided along 13th to get up there.
Okay.
Don't they have to put sidewalk? Isn't sidewalk part of the development? Don't they have to put sidewalk, isn't sidewalk part of the development plan?
Well, this is, it's a great question, because this area is, let's call it unique in some, in some aspects. Typically, when there's new development, a brand new development in the city, sidewalk is required to be put in. In this situation, 13th was redone not terribly long ago. They never ordered in sidewalk on either side of the street. So there is no sidewalk on the north side. Once you get past the alley to the east, there's also no sidewalk on either side of the street. So we talked with the city engineer, and he wouldn't require, in this case, them to install sidewalk for this development. In the future, if the road were to be redone again, he would order in sidewalk.
When I was out of the site this afternoon, or this morning, I, you know, I saw the sidewalk along Minnesota Street, and I'm wondering, you know, God, that should really have a fence, because you could just jump off the sidewalk down into this pit, really. But the hill is pretty steep there, so how much of the right away, or the setback on the 13th South Street side stays hill? I mean, you know, that's gonna have to be landscaped, and you've got a retaining wall on Minnesota Street, what are you gonna put along 13th?
Along 13th, they're planning on having those, that would be graded slightly, but they could construct on that today. Because they are going below that, the toe of that slope. Again, for phase one, they'd be constructing one here and here, and that, today you could construct on that site. There would be some grading involved, but it's not, it's not impassable.
Would the common building have a storage, a storage, not storage, I'm sorry, safety? Like a tornado shelter in there?
Yes, they would have to have that. Common building would also be where sewer, common sewer and water would go to, and that's probably where the grinder pump or sewage up to Minnesota would go.
Is there laundry?
All of your meters would be located there.
All of your what?
Meters.
Is there a laundry facility?
They're talking about laundry in each one of the units.
In the units?
That's what I understand. I should also note, part of the developers team from New Brick is also here too, so if there's some specific questions that I might not have answers to, or Dave might not have answers to, I'm sure they'd be happy to comment.
So besides utilities in the common building, what's the purpose there?
Could you step up to the microphone, please, state your name and address?
Yeah, Tim Canock, New Ulm, Minnesota. I think John really answered that question, what's in the common building, right? John had mentioned that you, you know, probably just actually, you're gonna have meters in there, obviously, and you're gonna have a storm safety area. You're gonna have some of the utilities in there. I don't think there's anything in addition to that at this time. I also want to make mention that I'm filling in for Steve, he's been the administrator of this total plan, so he's in Italy for a week and a half, and Bill will answer the questions the best we can today.
Go ahead.
I'm generally supportive of the project, I think it's a good project for the location. The neighborhood is mixed use, as several people have said. This block has got mixed densities, so I think, I think if there's a location that it works, this would be it. There, I do have some concerns and some questions. First one I've got is about parking. I know that it's 20 by 20, you don't get a lot of people into 400 square feet, but I can easily see a couple of people in many of them, so they will have to be parking out on the street, and that's okay. I'm just thinking, in the wintertime, when it's snowing, and I gotta get to my car in the street, there isn't really any good way, that the alley is gravel, there's no sidewalks on any of the streets, except on Minnesota, which you can't get to. So I think something has to be provided for those folks who are definitely gonna have to park on the streets. That's my first question. The second one is, why aren't we paving at least a portion of the alley that's abutting this project now? Why wait? I think if we have a new development in the city now, we sort of expect things to be paved.
I can answer that question, I think we would definitely take a look at that. It's probably something that should have been considered right away. We're looking at feasibility at this point, of course, and I think that would be an easy request to take care of.
Okay, and I'm thinking perhaps with like, the second phase, that that could get paved. And I'm also kind of wondering about the comparative first floor elevation of like, the twin home to the, immediately to the south there, and, and some of the tiny homes next to them, are they going to be relatively the same? Or are the tiny homes gonna be lower, sort of in the pit, as it were?
Yeah, I think the proposal is that the tiny homes are all the same height, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm asking about the finished floor elevation, I mean, you get to the front door, is it about the same elevation as the front door of the existing homes to the south?
I don't know if I can answer that question today.
John's doing this.
I would say that based on what, what we have seen, that there would be a difference in elevation between the first floor of the, of the twin home and the elevation of the tiny homes.
Okay, I'm just wondering if it looks really out of place.
Those twin homes are really tall.
They are.
Yeah.
So the tiny homes, I would, I would expect those to be much shorter.
Well, I think what you can imagine, and what we've tried to describe here a little bit, that eight foot retaining mall, that's going to be along the Minnesota side of the street. So that is going to be, have to be a flat, vertical surface, everything else will be graded back, so they may gain a little bit of elevation towards the back of the lot, but the tiny homes are gonna be below that, that twin home, at least street level, by at least eight feet. And then you could add on the, another 12 feet at least for the height of that building. So I would imagine that the peak of those tiny homes is gonna be somewhere around the p, or sorry, somewhere around the deck height in the back of those twin homes.
If you go to the first picture, John, you can see it pretty well, I think. Yeah, down, down.
Which one, down?
Right there.
Sure. Some, actually, it probably, it would probably be above that deck, a little bit.
But the, but the proposed wall will be running to the right side of the picture, towards the front of that tiny, or twin home on the right. Comment on the wall and access to their Minnesota, right?
Yeah.
It would be potentially feasible to put in some kind of staircase to get up the wall, that would be outside the wall. Yeah, either side, that would maybe come from the backside of the common, the common building, and then, just, just something to think about.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Commissioner. Again, we're looking at phase one, which is two units, and I think there can be additional conversation and changes made for phase two, to accommodate even your first question, Commissioner, that you had, Bill.
What's the price point gonna be for rental?
We're thinking about $1,000 a month. And with that said, you know, it's gonna accommodate seasonal, which we definitely have a shortfall in our community. In addition to that, we would consider, you know, six month or yearly rentals too. But the occupants will be screened, obviously, in a, in a manner that fits the intention of the tiny home project. And I want to mention too, that, you know, New Brick considers itself and a partner of New Ulm, New Ulm and the EDA, we worked, you know, basically side by side to try to accomplish what's in the strategic plan. You know, the strategic plan does call for workforce housing, and we're trying to accommodate that in this phase.
The renditions that we see here, are, are they gonna look anything like this?
Say that again.
The renditions that we see of the tiny houses, is this what they're gonna look like, and anything like this, or is this just?
They don't look just like that.
They will.
Oh yeah, this is gonna be attractive.
Even the pretty flowers?
No.
That's art.
Oh.
Whoever art is.
Rebecca T. Marine, New Ulm, Minnesota.
Sorry, you didn't have to respond.
We're glad that you paid attention to our art. So, yeah, these, these are ideas that we want to float by, these are probably the ones that fall into most of the New Ulm heritage and culture that we also want to sustain as well. But, yeah, the intention is to keep them nice, to be able to be manageable, and to fit into the neighborhood.
Could, John, could I, I don't know who can address this, but it has to do with the phasing. I mean, I'm gonna assume that it's going to go well, and we'll have a phase two, but you know, if the world falls apart, and there's only a phase one, is what we're seeing in the phase one development plan going to accommodate development to the rest of that site reasonably?
It's a great question, actually it would. That corner lot on 13th South is actually currently a split 50 by 165 foot lot, so there's, there's two lots there existing today, where you could build individual residences on, just like we have in many other corner lots in our grid section of New Ulm. Which would then leave the remaining three lots to the south available for future development.
So will the, the wall that parallels Minnesota be constructed in the first phase? That'll be the second phase, right? Okay, then I understand, all right.
This first phase, the picture, is that the, like, coming from the east, is that the first and third house that's being built?
I think so. Joe, let me go up.
So I'm on 20 of 48, and 21. Yeah, right there.
Yep.
One and three, so there would be one in between, and then one on, or two in between?
I think one on the corner.
And one on the corner, right?
Doesn't look like there's room for two in between, does it?
That would have, that would have to shift, I think, a little bit.
Okay.
Which two of them is it on this plan?
The way I understood it, from Mr. Brown, was this one here and this one here.
Okay, that makes sense.
So phase one isn't gonna include the common building? It would have to, would it not?
Another, it's another great question. In this lot, when North Min, sorry, South Minnesota Street was last redone, which was a while ago, they actually stubbed in, I believe it's five different sewer and water utility services into these lots. So what could happen here is that, there is a stub in here, just to the next lot over, what we would require, or the city engineer would require, would be that both those go to their own individual stub, in the case where this project were not to move forward past phase one, that they would be on their own sewer and water system.
What about shelter?
There wouldn't be the tornado shelter, or the storm shelter provided in, in phase one. I, I would also note though, I mean, that's a great question, but at the same time, we have other homes in the community that are slab on grade and don't have basements, but...
They probably have indoor bathrooms that are protected.
Yeah, I would note that our building official would certainly require that all of these meet wind and snow load requirements, and they'll have to be tied down accordingly.
I would also like to note that for phase one, we're not planning to have people live in the first two that we're building, we're using these as models to show the community as to what our intention is, and to provide support for more funding. So at the point that somebody does live in there, by then you would have storm shelter?
Will these, will these be stick built slab on grade, or are they like, pre-manufactured and moved in, or do you know yet?
Well, what I can mention to you, and Joe was involved, Commissioner Shatsko, just recently, is the, we're touring the CTE Center up in Hutchinson, Minnesota, and they're currently constructing, the students are the tiny homes. So we're working with District 88 with hopes that they can be involved in this model, and start doing the, you know, wall constructions right at the facility.
Stick?
Might be, might be component, you'd put walls together and bring the walls and put them together on the site, is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one more question, if I may. I understand this is sort of, could be short term workforce housing, is there some way we can try to prevent these from becoming short term vacation rental housing?
I don't think we've discussed that, but that's a good question, that we can go ahead and bring back to the group. I don't think that that's an intention at all, as we already have enough of that done by the studies that we have seen, and, and when we were prepping for this.
And I think we'd prefer that, since what we're really aiming at here is workforce housing.
How would you like that?
I think you mentioned that two to six months, or, you know, if it's, if it's more than a month as a lease, a single month, most vacationers aren't going to come to New Ulm for a month. I think it has to do with the, the minimum term of rental, but John was going to jump in and say something, so I cut you off, sorry.
No, that's fine, thank you. Dave and I have, have discussed this, and one way we can deal with that issue is specify the minimum lease amount of days in the development agreement.
Okay. I wouldn't make that too long, though, because, you know, there may be visiting nurses or something that need a month, but at least, you know, if you go at least a month, most vacationers don't get a month to come anywhere, so.
I believe the number, I believe the number we had been discussing was 30 days, that's a pretty common number, whether or not it's a short term rental or longer. So 30 days is probably a number we'd work with.
We just.
General Chair says she vacations for a month, so maybe you gotta go longer, I don't know, but just think about what that minimum.
Doing some research in Hutchinson for my son for college, and it, most places are month by month or year lease, and then there's a, there's a significant price difference based on which one you do. So you get a break if you sign for a year. Yep.
I just don't want to see this turn into VRBO housing, or...
That's my concern. Because they'd be great for VRB housing. I'd rent one for two weeks, they're like spectacular. Of course, you're an industrial area, but, no. Do I want one?
I need two for my stuff. Are there any other questions? Anyone from the audience have a comment or question that they want to bring to us? Has the commission got any further questions? Otherwise, I'm going to call to reading the finding of facts. Who's answering, are you answering, or is Dave?
Well, again, like we've done previously, we can either go through each finding, or you all have had a chance to review those, and you can either agree with the entire fact sheet, or make some amendments, and we can move on.
Has everyone read the finding of facts completely, and do you agree?
I agree, I would, I would like to see something done with making it easier for that poor soul that has to trudge to his car out in Minnesota, but that can be done sometime between now and, and final plan.
All right, we're gonna abstain from the reading of the finding of facts and call for a motion. Which is on page six and seven, if I recall.
I'll move to recommend approval of this general development plan as we see with the conditions that staff has, has put into the report. And I'd like to add an additional condition, that consideration be given to access to potential parking on Minnesota Street.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and is this July 1st, or?
Correct. This will go to the City Council on July 1st at 4:30.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan amendment for New Brick Project Spark Arten Dorf Tiny Homes. I'm sorry, I stumbled over that.
Okay. We have a related item to this request having to do with the comprehensive plan, since we need to change the designation that we have for this particular piece of property. And as you'll note on the staff report, we would transition from low-density residential to high-density residential. And that decision is based, very simply, on the density of the project. And so, pretty much, the first page of the report is the same as the one that we just went through. So, if the Commission has no reservations... And also, when we get to project description, the first four items are identical to what we previously reviewed. So, I'd like to start with item number five on page two. Purpose of the comprehensive plan. It's an official statement by New Ulm City Council that describes the community's shared vision, goals, and objectives for future growth and development. Plans, recommendations, provide guidance for the city's priorities, growth, investments, and development over the next 20 years. As a guide to development, it is intended to be flexible and responsive document that can be amended to acknowledge changing conditions and new opportunities. Number six is comprehensive plan definitions. So, we have a definition provided for low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential. And if it's acceptable to the Commission, I won't read them.
Okay.
A little bit about the history for this particular piece of property from a comprehensive plan standpoint. Again, in September 1963, in the New Ulm Land Use Plan, it was designated industrial. In May of 1996, in the City of New Ulm Comprehensive Plan Land Use Plan, it was designated high-density residential. And then in June of 2024, City of New Ulm Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use, it was designated low-density residential. So, the last comprehensive plan was adopted by the City Council in June of 2024. And we note the change that has been made in the designation. The reason the city changed the land use designation from high-density residential to low-density residential is that the previous owner, and in this instance, we're talking about the owner who subdivided the property into the 25-foot-wide lots. And so, we had, how many of those did we... We had the corner lot, and then we had 25-foot lots the rest of the way.
And those were for the twin homes?
And those were for the twin homes.
Okay.
And so, the twin homes were a land use that was, could be covered under a low-density residential classification, and so that's why we made the change.
So, at the time that the twin homes were developed, it was the land use, future land use designation was high-density residential?
Yes, it was.
Interesting. Okay.
So, reasoning for considering amending the comprehensive plan, we have a number of those listed. One, this property has varied residential densities surrounding the property to the north, south, and east. The school is located to the west. Two, previously, the property was designated as HDR, high-density residential. Three, the proposed development is not proposed as attached multifamily units. They are individual units designed to provide for the feel of a smaller, single-family home. Four, smaller tiny home development was identified in the 2024 comprehensive plan as a type of needed housing in New Ulm. 14.1% of respondents identified this type of housing. Five, it's a type of affordable housing. Six, there is a strong demand for a wider range of rental housing options. New rental housing can be developed immediately and will continue to be in strong demand through this decade, especially if continued job availability and new job growth is attracted to New Ulm. Six, townhomes, twin homes, or detached villas. These housing options can be attractive, especially to empty nesters, young seniors, or entry-level buyers. According to the Housing Needs Analysis Report that was done in 2022, there is a limited amount of this type of housing available in New Ulm. The cottages at Orchard Hills is an example of the demand for this housing type among the growing senior population. Eight, New Ulm has a growing senior population that live independently in larger homes on private property. These homes could provide an additional senior housing option with no yard or winter ground maintenance required and still be independent living. Nine, courtyard housing and tiny homes were identified in the comprehensive or small-area plans as an additional housing option that should be considered in the community. This project proposal is a combination of courtyard housing and tiny home development, considering the yard areas around the homes and common space/building to be provided in the development. Nine, comprehensive plan questions regarding amendments. Does the proposed change generally comply with the identified criteria found in the findings of fact form? And is this an appropriate location for high-density residential land uses given the surrounding comprehensive plan land use designations? Number 10, other tiny home developments. In staff's review of other tiny home communities in the state and across the country, we have found that there are few that are similar in the footprint of the home and that have a similar architecture. Many of the tiny home villages researched are managed for year-to-year leases, where you can bring in your own tiny home on wheels and lease a spot in the village. Other communities we researched had permanent spots for the dwellings, but the dwellings were on wheels and a chassis. And then finally, the most similar development we found in Minnesota is Fairmont cottages in Duluth. Okay, we have attachments, and there are 10 of them. The first is the petition, including the site plan. Second attachment is the site location map. Third is the site map. Fourth is the comprehensive plan future land use map. Five is the 2007 comprehensive plan land use map. Six is the City of New Ulm Development Barriers Map. Seven is the high-density land use areas in New Ulm that are designated. Eight is the medium-density land use areas. Nine is the ground-level photos. Again, they're the same ones. And 10 is these findings of fact form prepared by the staff. Staff would recommend approval of the amendment of the comprehensive plan land use category change from low-density residential to high-density residential. The reasons for this recommendation can be found in attachment 13. Recommended conditions, that the applicant owner will pay the cost to record necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And two, amendments of the land use categories are subject to the approval of a planned unit development zoning designation for the subject property. Then there are two motions, one to approve and one to deny their request. That would conclude the staff report.
Does anyone have any further questions?
No.
Has everyone read the finding of facts form, and do you agree with the finding of facts form?
Yes.
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 Did everyone say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I will waive the reading of the finding of facts form and ask for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the petition of Stephen Brown on behalf of Project Spark to amend the city's comprehensive plan to allow high-density residential land uses in place of low-density residential land uses for the property legally described as the property legally described as lots 1 through 8, Idinger addition, and generally located at 418 and 424 13th South Street and 1305 to 1315 South German Street. The reasons for approving this motion are found in the attached findings of fact form.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, July 1st. This concludes the public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment. The next item on the agenda is a variance request for 413 South Highland Avenue. City. Thank you.
So, this variance request is requested to allow the construction of a 14 and 1/2 by 26-foot garage addition to an existing detached residential garage 16 feet from the front yard property line. The applicant is Tyler Zoller. He is also the property owner. And the legal description here is the front half of Lot D, Outlet 313. Street address is 413 South Highland Avenue. The property is generally located on the east side and end of the paved surface of South Highland Avenue. Deadline for a decision on this application is August 10th, 2025. Comprehensive plan land use designation is low-density residential, and the surrounding land uses, according to the comprehensive plan, are also all low-density residential to the north, south, east, and west. Zoning designation for the property is RT1, that's the, sorry, it's R1, Single Family Residence District. Surrounding zoning is also R1 to the north, south, east, and west. Currently, the site is used as a single-family home with associated residential accessory structures. Current area land uses to the north, south, east, and west are also all single-family homes with associated residential accessory structures. I would also note that there's large wooded ravine areas that all lead down to Flandrew State Park behind this home and then across the road to the west. Notice was provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property and published in the Journal on June 14th, 2025. To date, we have not received any comments regarding this request. So, the purpose of the R1 zoning district is to provide for low-density single-family detached residential dwelling units along with directly related complementary uses. The property requesting the variance is located on the front half of Outlet D, Outlet 113, and this property was platted in 1954. Staff has consulted with the city attorney regarding provisions in the city zoning ordinance and its allowance of residential detached accessory structures of up to 1,000 square feet in size, when the lot is directly abutting a separate lot, but under the same ownership. City attorney has concluded that the zoning ordinance allows for this activity, provided that detached accessory structure meets all applicable setbacks of the zoning district. And what I mean by that is if you were to, it's now separate parcels, but if you were to look at the Brown County parcel map, it shows one big rectangle. But actually, underlying that, that's just, that parcel is just a tax description, or it's for tax purposes. Underlying that, there's two separate lots. So, where this garage is, is on a separate lot from where the home is to the north. So, just so we're clear on that. The city attorney has also reviewed the lot and topographical maps on the site and concurred with staff that the proposal by Tyler Zoller would qualify for a variance request. So, again, the applicant is proposing to construct a 14 and 1/2 by 26-foot addition on the south side of the existing garage. The existing garage was constructed in 1965. It is approximately 22 feet from the front yard property line on South Highland Avenue at its closest point. The existing garage is 24 by 26, or 624 square feet in size. The required front yard setback for a garage like that in this district is 30 feet. So, within approximately 10 feet of the southeast corner of the existing garage, the ravine steeply drops off at a 10-foot vertical distance or a 24, 25-foot horizontal distance or a 25-foot slope. It's a substantial slope. The slope between the residence and the detached garage is approximately 17%. It's also a very steep slope. Staff has reviewed the potential to construct a detached garage behind the residence, but the property owners don't believe it's feasible because of the slope between the house and the existing garage. The addition extending to the south will meet the five-yard, 5-foot side yard required setback for a detached accessory structure in that district. The application provides the following information on the project. Due to the unique location and orientation of our parcel, to add an additional stall to our garage to the south would require us to encroach upon the 30-foot front yard setback. The topography and angle of our lot really prevent any other option for building. The direction and angle at which our property sits is most unique in that our house is straight with the street, but the garage angles to account for the ravine and the direction of the road. Staff's evaluation is that the zoning ordinance variance criteria dictates that there must be features unique to the property, such as physical surroundings, lot size and shape, topography, water conditions, and/or other physical conditions unique to the property. Staff does believe that the location of the garage on the property, the abutting ravine to the east and south, is unique to this site and the neighborhood. The garage was constructed on the site in 1965. It was not built by the current owner, and therefore, the current owner has not created the situation on this site that necessitates the variance. The slope on the north side of the existing garage and the east side of the existing garage limit the area where addition could be feasibly constructed to the garage. The proposed location of the garage, proposed location of the garage in front of the required front yard setback line will not cause sightline issues with the neighboring properties. North Highland Avenue dead ends at the house immediately to the south of this. There's still road right-of-way all the way down to Flandrew, but it's for stormwater purposes in a steep ravine. The request being made is reasonable, a reasonable use of the property and will not change the essential character of the neighborhood. Further evaluation can be found in attachment 7, the findings of facts. So, project considerations. So, in order to recommend approval of the variance request, the Commission will need to adopt findings of facts using the review criteria found in attachment 7. To approve it, you must find that all of the answers are in the affirmative supporting the variance request. We had seven attachments. I think probably the photos do the most justice in explaining this situation. First attachment is the application. The second attachment is the subject property. So, here's Indian Point Drive. This is all Flandrew State Park down here as well. This area is all ravine. This area is all ravine, wooded ravine. Here is the zoning map. You can see it's surrounded by all R1 properties. Here is the site map. The area in red is actually the parcel of the property. The lots underneath, if you were to draw a line straight down here towards this corner of the driveway, this is an outlot, and this is also an outlot. The proposed addition is in blue here on the south side of that garage. Here's the topographical map showing the different-- these are two-foot contours. You can see right behind the garage, it slopes very steep to the north and east and to the south and east. The addition being proposed would be right where my pointer is and where this stack of logs is on the south side of the garage. Again, that would meet the five-foot required side yard setback with the property line. Here is looking between both the garage and the house. And you could see that it would be difficult to attach that type of addition on this side without doing a ton of fill and grading work to make that feasible. Here's from behind the southeast corner, looking towards North Highland Avenue of the existing garage. This is just taking a shot right behind the garage, looking down the hill. Another shot right behind the garage, looking towards the north. Here is the southeast corner, looking towards the neighbor to the south. And this is just-- I was feeling photogenic that day, so I took some extra pictures of the wooded area directly behind the garage.
Very nice picture.
Thank you. And then lastly, the last attachment is the findings of facts. The applicant, the applicant is here, and I'm sure he'd be willing to answer any questions you might have as well. That concludes-- sorry. We have two recommended conditions. One, that the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And two, that the applicant will contact the city to verify the location of the building once it is staked. Two potential motions. One, to recommend approval with conditions of the variance request, and one to recommend denial. And that would conclude the staff report.
Questions are mostly curiosity. Is the intent to make it a three-stall garage? Or is it just to add space for?
State your name and address, please.
Tyler Zoller, and I live at the subject property. Yeah, the intent would be to add a third door and a third stall.
Okay. And then is the roof line going to change?
The roof line will change. It will be oriented the same. The gable will face the street. But it's hand-framed, and that wall that's existing on the south side would go away. So we'll have to do something with some manufactured trusses to span the whole.
Okay.
Yeah. But the gable would stay the same. I mean, the intent would be to keep the look identical, except adding another stall.
But then the, you're not planning to redo the pavement up to it or adjust the?
Yeah, I will. I will, you know, pave that extra stall or concrete. And then, you know, there's some, eventually, probably the rest of the driveway as well because it's breaking up, but that's later on.
Okay.
Maybe just to clarify a little bit further on that, they're not requesting a new curb cut or an expansion of the curb cut either to accommodate?
So the curb cut stays the same, but the concrete just kind of goes like?
Okay, correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Have we not had variances of this type in that neighborhood before? Because it's such an odd abutment to the Flandrew and the grade.
Yeah, there was one, a few, I think it was maybe even last summer, that had requested something similar. And again, similar situation with ravines on multiple sides of the property.
There's just two lots down, and we're just putting up outbuilding on it.
Correct.
What is the distance between the new structure? What is the spacing going to be, the side spacing going to be?
When we-- to the setback line?
Yeah.
The side yard line? When we were out there, I believe it was about six and 1/2 feet.
And so really, from the neighbors, it's probably another 20 feet, 10 feet?
To the house?
Yeah.
I would have, I would have, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head. We were, what we were looking for is that they met the required setback of five feet.
Okay. All right.
I did, I did, I did speak with Alan, he's the neighbor, for whatever it's worth, and let him know when.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm sure he's gotten wind of it by now. Or he will when you start staking it out.
Yeah, well, I talked to him before in person and just let him know when he was. His only concern was the tree on his property line, which is inside of his setback, so it would never be.
So it's safe?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And the other thing is, is garage to garage, so it's.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Hearing none. Has everyone read the finding of facts form? And do you agree?
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, so we're waiving the reading of the finding of facts form. And if there are no other questions, I would call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of variance request by Tyler Zoller to construct a 14 and 1/2 foot by 26-foot garage addition to an existing detached garage at 16 feet from the front yard property line on the property, legal described as front one-half of Lot D of Outlet 313.
With conditions?
Yes, it was in there, yeah. Approval with conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A second.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Also to the July 1st city council meeting.
Thank you for appearing. That concludes the public hearing portion of the variance request. Next item on the agenda is plat. Consider for approval the final plat of Land Haven addition.
Yeah, in this particular case, the applicant is Tony Golden on behalf of Land Haven Development LLC. Property owner is the City of New Ulm. Although he has a purchase agreement to acquire the property. Legal description is Lot 1, Block 1 Airport Industrial Park, 3rd addition. Street address is 2211 Jacob Street. Property is located west of Jacob Street and east of Walmart. Status of the plat, city council approved preliminary plat adage June 3rd, 2025 meeting. Deadline for approval of this request is August 10th, 2025. Land use designation, comp plan is industrial. Grounding land uses to the north and east are industrial. South is commercial, and the west is industrial and parks and open space. Property is zoned I-1 Planned Industrial District. To the north, we have Brown County, industrial. To the east, we have an I-1. To the south, B-2 General Business District. And to the west, we have Brown County, again, another industry. Zoning designation, current site use is crop farming. Current area uses, the north, crop farming. To the east, crop farming and industry. To the south, Walmart in the airport. And to the west, crop farming in the Sampson Wildlife Management Area. A notice, none is required, no public comment. Status of utilities are available on Jacob Street and Barron's Boulevard. Comprehensive plan does not recommend a park within the platted area. I can tell you that there have been no changes made to the plat. So would you like me to continue? Or? Excuse me? Like me to continue?
No.
Stop.
Call for a vote now?
Two attachments. One is the final plat, and the other is the site location map. The only, there are four conditions. Pay the platting fee of 480. Provide an electronic file. Then enter into a development agreement and general development plan with the city in Ulm. And the resolution approving this request will be filed with. Then there's a motion to approve and to deny.
That concludes the staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
Pretty straightforward. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat of Land Haven addition with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to city decisions concerning planning commission matters on June 2025.
I'll abbreviate.
Thank you.
First of all, the general development plan for Keepers Highland Apartments was approved. The conditional use permit for Caitlin Cordis. That was for a fence. That was approved. The variance, variance request to allow a garage at 608 South Front Street was approved. They approved the general development plan for Land Haven. They vacated in Eastman area that didn't involve you. And then they conducted first consideration of the ordinance for the Keepers Project and for the Land Haven Project. At the June 17th, they conducted the second consideration of both the Land Haven and Keepers ordinances. And on a different matter, they made a loan to Franklin New Ulm LLC, One other thing, real quickly, something John and I have been talking about after the last two planning commission meetings. And that is that we think we need to look at our residential zoning districts again. It seems pretty obvious that we have a lack of identity residential property. Now, we probably, if these apartments all get built, we won't build another apartment in a long time. But we still think that we need to relook at what we have designated, at least on the zoning map. And we also thought maybe what we should do is do some combination of districts where maybe we have high density along with medium density as one, and then we have another medium density by itself. And maybe that way, then, we introduce some flexibility in property that can be maybe have, you know, used for, but still would be. But we want to look at those kind of subjects and we'll bring some stuff back, you know. For you, and it'll probably be about three years from now. So I'm not going to worry about it.
That would be great.
Mr. Zabel?
We had one design review come in front of us for signing each on an awning at the old Gypsy Girl, and that went through and passed.
Looks good.
That was it?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.